Thank you, Bo. I'd like to call the July 24th Program and Personnel Committee meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone stands for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Everyone returns to their seats.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up. An invitation for public comment. Anyone here from the public wishing to address the committee?
Pause for public.
Mary, we didn't have any... We didn't have a sign anything. Okay. Moving on. First item, D-128 Communications Audit.
Dr. Denise Herman.
Yes, I would like to introduce Holly from JT, who is here to give a presentation to us. Her firm did the communication audit. And I'd like to thank her personally for the speed and the thoroughness by which they were able to complete the work. We really wanted to make sure we received this report in July so that we would be able to use the recommendations to guide our communication plan for next year and moving forward. And so I'm going to allow Mary to add a few things, and then we'll turn it over to Holly for the presentation.
I... Excuse me. I would just add that it was an incredible, fast-tracked project. And you guys were amazing to work with through that. And as was our community, and our teachers, and students, and staff. They all just stepped up to the task. So I'm excited to have Holly present her findings.
Holly Bartekki.
Thank you so much. So my name is Holly Bartekki, and I'm an Executive Vice President with Justco Keterman Strategic Communications. I'll tell you a little bit about our firm in a second. We were engaged in late March to help the district conduct a communications audit and to develop some recommendations that would evaluate your current communications, targeting parents, staff, and students, and then provide recommendations for you moving forward. So I'm here tonight to present our methodology, our findings, and recommendations from that process. My presentation will take about 20 minutes, and then we'll have about time for questions.
Pause for slide.
All right. So a bit about us. Our firm is often called JT because Justco Keterman is a mouthful. We specialize in public policy communications around quality-of-life issues that matter to people and communities: economic and workforce development, healthcare, transportation, environmental issues, and of course, education, both K-12 and higher ed, where we have deep expertise in both. I'm a former community college administrator and a former school board president, and my partner on this project was the former in-house communications director for Township High School District 214. So we have deep expertise in K-12 issues. Our work at JT includes both the proactive communications planning, strategy, and message development, and work like this audit, as well as issues and crisis communications. We also have an in-house video team, a social media operation, and an events division that does everything from small policy forums to big events like the Million Man March or presidential debates. And so we bring all that expertise to bear, and we were honored to share... to be a part of your team for this important project.
Pause for slide.
All right. So I'll start with an overview of our four-step methodology for the communications audit. As we began the engagement, we conducted an extensive review and analysis of a wide range of background materials and information related to the district's current communications, including a lot of backend data and analytics from your website and your social media channels. We also conducted a series of one-on-one interviews with key district and board leaders so that we would really understand your goals and priorities and hear your perspectives on current communications, targeting staff, parents, and students. And then we facilitated four focus groups: two virtual sessions with parents and two onsite sessions with staff members from Vernon Hills and Libertyville High Schools, and also the district's transition program. And then insights from all of that informed the scope of inquiry for an online opt-in survey that was conducted by a professional survey research firm called Faco Research and Strategies that was specifically designed to assess perceptions and identify communications needs and preferences for each group.
Pause for slide.
Across all of our different processes, we identified a number of findings for which staff, parents, and students were united, and that's where I'll start. So for example, across all of the audiences, email, your high school websites, and e-paw prints were consistently the most-used communication channels, with email being preferred by all. Similarly, there was generally positive feedback on the ability to find the information you're looking for on those channels, e-paw prints in particular, but also the district and the high school websites. Interestingly, during our analysis, we... well, of course, we listened to multiple episodes of the Daring Podcast, and it is very well-produced and has excellent content. But the vast majority of staff, parents, and students indicated that that was not a source that they were currently looking for district information from that channel.
Pause for slide.
Staff, students, and parents expressed very positive perceptions of the district's communications of emergency alerts and information. And across the board, high school principals were recognized as a trusted source of district information. We also learned that all stakeholder groups, but especially parents and students, were generally more interested in information about their own school than about both schools or the district as a whole. And they were also more interested in communications specifically targeted to them and their needs versus generic communications targeting all audiences. Everyone expressed that major district projects or initiatives were a specific topic of great interest, and we also observed that on all social media platforms, content that highlighted students and faculty garnered the most engagement.
Pause for next topic.
Before I move, I'm going to start with some... an overview here of some general perceptions of the district. Whoops. This is really interesting here, how this goes. So in... both JT and our research partners were very deliberate in crafting the very first survey question to ask each audience how things were going in the district generally, whether they're headed in the right direction or the wrong track. And we use this kind of survey question during audits to assess broad sentiment and provide insights as to whether any concerns about communication are the problem themselves or perhaps the symptom of a different problem. So as you can see from this chart, our research findings indicate that in terms of overall sentiment, your district is really a tale of two cities. So we have feedback from parents and staff generally aligned in expressing very positive sentiment and satisfaction, and a majority of staff members indicating that the district is headed in the wrong direction. And we see this same pattern when we look specifically at communications. So when asking about communications targeting each audience segment, you see parents and students expressing very strong above-average ratings, and staff members exactly the opposite.
Pause for slide.
So let's dive a little deeper into our findings for each audience segment, starting with staff. Now, it's important to state that our expert analysis confirmed that the district does provide frequent and robust internal communications, and that includes e-paw prints, your Staying Connected updates, and your board highlight recaps. But only 14% of your staff members ranked the district as very good or excellent in providing the right amount of communication. (coughs) Excuse me.
Pause for slide.
During our focus groups, several staff members reported that they were seeking more acknowledgement of the district's current efforts, even when making changes or introducing new things. Staff members reported some concerns that communications from different district and school leaders was inconsistent or not timely. For example, in the focus groups, they talked about incorrect or changing information that sometimes required multiple follow-ups to clarify. And they expressed confusion about the reasons behind delays on routine communications. One example was the final exam schedule, for which they would have expected, like, we do this every year, you know, why don't we have a process and a timeline in place? During the focus groups, some participants commented on the impersonal tone of the district's communications and described the content as verbose but vague. And they really expressed a strong desire for more personal connection, warmth, and collegiality in the district's communications.
Pause for slide.
In addition to the high school principals, staff members look to their director... their direct supervisor, and also your Director of Communications as trusted resources for information. But we learned that the majority of staff members do not rely on social media as a source of district information. In addition, during the focus groups, we heard from several educational service personnel who expressed some disappointment, that they felt that their group was overlooked or included as an afterthought in district communications trainings and events, noting that the content often was not relevant to or didn't consider their roles.
Pause for slide.
Staff members were hungry particularly for more information about the reasoning, like the "why" behind important district decisions and policies and how they're made. And they were especially interested in receiving information about board goals, board actions, and board policies. So not surprisingly then, other key sources of information they rely upon included their website for their high school, board meetings, the board highlight recaps, and related materials that you post on the district website.
Pause for slide.
Staff member... staff focus group participants accept some level of survey fatigue. They... in both their focus groups and the survey responses, they express some concerns about whether the district truly values their opinions when making decisions. And there was a perception that sometime their input is sanitized or more favorably presented to the superintendent or the board. While they acknowledged that they and their peers are often invited to serve on committees or provide formal or informal input to district leaders, they also expressed some dismay that the committee recommendations were sometimes disregarded without explanation or felt like they didn't really know the status of the work of the committees. So these findings lead us to... I'm going to sort of jump to the punchline here. Highlight internal communications as a top priority in our recommendations to the district. But before we get to those recommendations, let me preview some findings that are unique to parents and students. So as I mentioned before, parents and students were very much aligned, very closely aligned in their feedback. So we have combined and consolidated our findings for these audiences here tonight. So first of all, parents and students agree that the district provides the right amount of communications to them, that it's generally easy to understand, and it includes the right amount of detail. They expressed broad satisfaction with opportunities to provide feedback to the district, and both felt that the district values their opinions when making decisions. However, both audiences, students in particular, were somewhat less satisfied that the district uses the feedback they provide. In addition to the high school principal, parents and students also indicated that teachers and their superintendent were trusted sources of information from the district. For students, teachers are in fact the most trusted source of information. And it's worth noting that parents were somewhat tempered in their belief that they understand the reasoning behind important district decisions and policies. So like staff, they seem interested in learning more about the "why."
Pause for next topic.
Students generally agree that they were able to identify which district and school communications are important for them to read.
Pause for slide.
And in contrast to staff members, about half of your parents and about 60% of your students indicated that they do look to social media as a source of information... district information. For parents, those parents who do use social media, they're looking to Facebook and Instagram, and for students, it's Instagram. In addition to major district programs and initiatives, both parents and students were interested in upcoming events as a topic. And during our focus groups, we did hear from some parents who felt that in their... in the district's communications, there was too much focus on awards and recognition, and a desire for more information about classroom projects and other programs that would better showcase the work of all students and teachers, not just high achievers.
Pause for slide.
So based on these findings, if there's one recommendation that the district should prioritize coming out of the audit, it is to dedicate additional time and resources to enhancing its internal communications to faculty and staff. Now, it's important to note that the dissatisfaction with communications and, you know, a dissatisfaction with the district overall, we can't really tell what that relationship is between the two. But we sense that communications... concerns about communication are at least partly reflective of other concerns about culture, climate, and processes, including perceptions of a significant amount of change being implemented. So in addition to... our recommendations highlight that in addition to developing the Internet more fully as an internal communications resource, we really recommend that the district rethink the content, format, and distribution of its board highlights recaps. Now, these are sent to staff after each meeting. And specifically, we've advised that the district streamline the content. Right now, it's really sort of like... almost like a version of your minutes that's written in a very formal style, that you streamline the content to focus on topics of most significance to the teaching and learning being done in the district, particularly on content that relates to progress in implementing the strategic plan. And we suggest redesigning these recaps as a monthly communication to come from the superintendent with plain language, personal observations and insights, and key updates on major district projects or initiatives, including committee announcements or updates. And this should include context around decision-making and infographics to aid in understanding of complex policy issues. Based on these revisions, we would suggest that the district also distribute this... these board highlights to parents, who also indicated they're interested in these topics. And finally, to allow for your communications staff member, one, to direct time to other important priorities, except for time-sensitive information like funeral arrangements, we suggest transitioning your Staying Connected updates from an as-needed to a weekly distribution.
Pause for slide.
Now, at its best, communication... most effective, communication is a two-way process that includes both the information we distribute and opportunities for people to provide us feedback. This too is a priority issue for the district to address. So it's important to set clear expectations upfront in your communications about what feedback you're seeking and how it's going to be used in your decision-making, including who feedback will be shared with and when. Particularly for committee work, we suggest that key feedback takeaways be presented to and confirmed by participants before they're escalated to the superintendent or the board, just to make sure... a little ground-truthing, to make sure you've captured their sentiments accurately. And then when convening committees, we recommend identifying and committing to a few key benchmarks at which project updates will be provided to those who are participating and the larger representative group. Finally, it's essential to acknowledge and transparently share what feedback was provided, by whom, and how it impacted the decision-making process, as well as to thank participants for their input and share details about any next steps.
Pause for slide.
Your district communications team, Mary, does an incredible amount of work and produces a huge volume of communications. But while there's a lot being done, it appears that it's being done without a clear communication strategy. So it's our understanding that Mary's going to be using our findings and recommendations to develop a strategy that will be previewed to the board in the coming months. The recommendations in our report go deeper and provide tactical ideas to ensure that key audiences understand that "why" behind major decisions, and that communications, particularly around routine topics that happen every year, are clear, timely, and correct in the first distribution. We specifically advise the development of an editorial content calendar, guidelines for the consistent rollout of major announcements, and coordinated scheduling to make sure that important information is delivered at the right time and through the optimal communications channel.
Pause for slide.
Both staff and parents are looking for the district to have a more personal and authentic voice. We reprimand... we recommend revamping and moving away from relying on e-paw prints to a more strategic approach to sharing district and school news and information that deliberately considers which trusted voice delivers or reinforces key messages. So for example, whenever possible, we suggest that district communications come from a specific person or department, and that includes the consistent implementation of principal newsletters at both high schools. Finally, we advise that the district do more digital storytelling to bring its teaching and learning to life with content that prioritizes classroom programs and projects that impact all students, again, versus a primary focus on awards and recognition.
Pause for slide.
A strategic social media plan should be included as part of the strategy I mentioned and include content guidelines and a cadence for how often the district will post, as well as a regular review of analytics to track reach and engagement. So to be clear, we do not feel it is essential, particularly given limited staff resources for each high school, to establish their own social media channels. However, we do recommend creating hashtags for each school to help interested followers access the content that they're most interested in. We recommend prioritizing Facebook and Instagram, as these are the most utilized channels currently, and they're well-suited to the kind of visual, interactive, and entertaining content users are looking for on social media. For social media to be effective, their algorithms really require a lot of content, way more than what is likely feasible, given the current staff support available for district communications. So one idea to help with this challenge and increase engagement is to create a structure and a process to crowdsource content from staff, students, and parents, obviously for review and approval by your Director of Communications. Now, although you have a good number of followers, given relatively low engagement and ranking of social media as a preferred communications channel, we recommend allowing the district's Twitter platform to go dormant. And similarly, we're recommending ending production of the Daring Podcast, although excellent, to redirect efforts of the communication staff to storytelling on other channels where your audiences are already looking for this content.
Pause for slide.
Given that you got relatively positive feedback about the website on the survey and that you have other, more urgent communication priorities, we recommend making smaller tweaks to the website now and postponing a full redesign until the 24-25 school year. Among our recommendations for short-term enhancements are adding more visuals and images throughout, refreshing the homepage, which is generally the most accessed and sets the first impression, making improvements to the navigation of the website by reducing the number of drop-down menus, and increasing the use of quick links to make accessing popular content quicker and easier.
Pause for slide.
Our final recommendation is also critically important, and that is to provide additional staff support for communications. A more strategic approach to communications in District 128 is greatly needed, but it requires additional time and resources that you don't currently have in place. And that includes strategy development work, support for superintendent and board communications, and internal communications, which is vitally needed. We recommend that the district consider adding an additional full-time communications specialist level position as soon as possible. Now, we recognize that this year's budget is likely already in place, and that it may not be possible to add this staff position as quickly as needed. So we did provide some specific recommendations on how to eliminate or reduce activities, such as the frequency of e-paw prints or the use of social media, to refocus on more urgent priorities.
Pause for slide.
Here... here. (laughs) Oh my gosh. I'm clicking, I swear. Here, we show a notional idea of how this additional communications position could support the district in taking a more strategic approach to communications. So what you see is the Director of Communications taking on that more strategic role and focusing on internal communications, where obviously Mary is already a trusted resource, with the communications specialist taking on more story finding, newsletter, social media, web content, video production, and supporting the principals in their communications.
Pause for slide.
All right. So thank you for your time and attention today, and I'm glad to answer any questions as Mary and Denise direct.
Jim Batson.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the... all the information that you've provided, both the feedback that you've gained and the recommendations. Denise, is there something that your team wants to add to the...
Dr. Denise Herman.
No, other than we... we anticipated the results that we got in terms of knowing from earlier communication with our staff that they've been communicating to us, that they feel that that is an area of growth for our administrative team and for our district. And so that finding was something that we felt just helped us know that the staff were very honest in the way that they responded to both the survey and the focus groups, and that the detail with which JT was able to take that and, you know, adjust that into actionable next steps for Mary and I, I think, is very helpful.
Jim Batson.
I do have one question. On one of the recommendations back a few screens, you had communications coming directly from the building principal, which I think is a... especially for the parents and students, is an important thing. But is there an opportunity there also for specific communication directed to the staff of each building?
Oh, absolutely. And we didn't envision that that would be just students and parents. I think, you know, principals across the board are very much a trusted information resource. And I think it's really the balance, and we provide some specific recommendations about, like, what content comes from the superintendent and what content comes from the principal, and how they can reinforce each other. And that's really what we're referencing when we're talking about coordinated scheduling. If you have... if your children have attended a school that has grade-level centers, you know how sometimes people stack up their newsletters and everything comes out on Friday?
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, you don't hear anything from anybody until Friday, and then you get four newsletters all at once, and sometimes they don't even say the same things. And so really, I think that's a really important role for Mary to play, is sort of traffic copying that and making sure that, you know, who's leading with which message, who's reinforcing, and what's the timing and cadence. We know from communication science and theory that people have to hear the same message multiple times, particularly on important topics, before they really integrate it and understand it. And so I think, you know, the devil's in the details in terms of implementation. But yeah, we really think the principals... communication is a very important component of their jobs, and they're really looked to as this information resource. So you're really giving the people what they want.
Yeah. Yeah. I would agree with that. And as sad as it is to, like, let go of the podcast because it's so good, you know, I understand letting go of Twitter. I think, you know, focusing on fewer but more consistent communication, you know, that both the timing and the pathway to get there, I think, is a really wise thing. You know, the predictability of something is important, and I think that if I'm accustomed to seeing the same thing in the same pattern, you're going to get accustomed to that. So... Other comments, questions?
What struck me, and thank you for this, this is very well put together. What struck me is your mentioning that one of the internal publications, I think, did you say it was board highlights? It's very verbose and, you know... the thing that struck me is we all live in the phone... in the phone world where people want to read highlights on the phone, and if you give a lot of content, you lose them in, like, two rows, two sentences. So I think that just struck me as in, how can we make that more consumable for someone who's reading stuff on the phone, especially if you publish this outside the school, like, parents?
I think that's true. And I think, you know, my observation is that it probably was really almost taking the notes from the meeting, as you would use them for the minutes, and repackaging them. And I think that what that does is it gives a lot of detail about things that are important... are necessary but not necessarily important. And so I think you do have to help your audience find the content that's most critical for them to engagement with, and it may not be like consent item agendas or, you know, sort of more routine tasks of the board. More you want to focus their attention on the bigger-picture discussions that you're having about your strategic plan, about curriculum, about facilities, you know, help them understand finances in a different, more digestible way.
Dr. Denise Herman.
I also want to share that once Mary and I received the report and the data, we immediately implemented a few of the recommendations in terms of saying that staff really don't use social media as much to hear about district news anyhow. And some of the things that we started in the spring, the Celebrate 128, was primarily Twitter and other things. And many staff said I hadn't seen them. So Mary, you know, collated all of them, sent them to the staff, put them on the website. So, you know, the good things that we were doing weren't reaching the staff, but without this report, we may not have really understood that or known to take a different strategy. So it's things like that, small things, but that I think will end up paying dividends in terms of the whole reason that we started that campaign was to make sure everyone was aware of the good news and the amazing accomplishments of our staff.
Kara Drumke.
You have two questions. One, is our relationship... what is now the continued relationship between the district and JT? Are we... now that you have given us the findings, which I really appreciated, and I think... I don't think... don't think it was a surprise to anybody who was reading through it, but is there some kind of an advocacy or, you know, assistance moving forward as we're making these implementation recommendations?
Holly Barthecky.
There can be. Our engagement concluded with this presentation tonight, but, you know, as a professional courtesy, we've told Mary and Denise, look, if you're working on something and you, you know, want to consider it in light of our recommendations, we're always going to take that phone call. And so, you know, if you need more support, more hands-on support, whether it's project-based or proactive, you know, we're glad to have that conversation with you. But I think that, you know, we've provided enough for Mary to develop a plan, and we'll be here if you need us.
Cara Drumke.
And one other, when you made the recommendation for the additional staff, I just was thinking, outside of, and I didn't have a chance to send this in, you know, we are, have now a Director of our Career Placement or Career Pathways. Do you see some of that possibly coming in the form of internships with our students?
Holly Barthecky.
Look, we have a robust internship program, and we love our interns, but I think that particularly some of the priorities that I heard here, like I would have no problem with students developing content facing students, and maybe even parents, but I feel like your staff has told you loud and clear that they're looking for something, some substantive changes and different emphasis, and I would not delegate that to a student intern. But I think crowdsourcing of content is something that we talked about, finding these stories that are bringing the teaching and learning to life. I think that's terrific, and I do think students could do that, and that's one of the things, one of our recommendations was this content curation.
Sonal Kulcarney. Thank you for saying that, because that was my second question, which how can we get our students involved? Like if we have to update the website, for example, we have students who are probably pretty capable of doing things like that. So I would say figuring out a way of bringing students into this would be a good experience for them.
But not denigrating the importance of the things that we do have to do. I mean, I agree, right? I mean, that's not what I intended. I don't want to hire students to do jobs that we should be hiring people for, but just to get them a part of the process. I think when they're a part of the process, it makes the whole process better.
Lisa Hessel.
Well, and certainly to the point of celebrating what's going on in the classrooms as opposed to just awards, we need storytellers. And both teachers and students are our best storytellers for what's going on in the classrooms. So I think crowdsourcing, as you pointed out, is going to be a wonderful way to tell our story about what's going on in the classroom beyond just the high-achieving academic or athletic or activities awards.
Cara Benjamin.
Is there any way you could pop the slide back up with the difference between the Director of Communications and Communication Specialist?
I can't, but you're.
You would be helpful to just see that clarified once again.
I was frantically doing it over there.
And while he does that, are you going to share that presentation with us?
Yes, you have it.
It came to us, we just didn't have it by Thursday, so we didn't include it, but we will upload it, we'll share it with all of you, and we'll also upload it so that the public has reference to this PowerPoint.
Right, so that'll be on our district website in Board Docs.
Pause for slide. Holly Barthecky.
And again, this is notional, how it could work if you decide to go down this path.
Don Carmichael.
So there were a couple of places where you mentioned that we need to use feedback in a way that values the people on committees. Do we know how to do that? Like, is that a skill that you have imparted so Mary can pick up that ball and run with it? Because that seems to me like, that's a tough one.
Mary Todderyk.
I would say yes. We have had a discussion on ways to do that, and I think a lot of it is, not that we don't want to do that, but it's just one more thing, like there's so much going on, and I'm one person, and it's going to take a team, a team effort to be much better at that, and we need to be.
Right, because that's not just communications, it's culture as well.
Right, exactly.
Don Carmichael and Cara Drumke.
Good point.
You said it better than me. That's what I meant when I said is our really, like, are we prepared?
I had written the exact same question you asked.
Are we prepared to do this? These are all great findings, but if we have the why, now we need help with the how.
Yeah.
Jim Batson.
Okay, anything else?
Pause for discussion and questions.
Thank you so much. This is very, very helpful, even though, you know, we probably anticipated a lot of the feedback, but we really appreciate the recommendations, the key recommendations, and how do we get to the next step, so.
There's always room for improvement when we do audits. I mean, there's a lot of great things happening, but I think you now have a little bit of a roadmap to guide you moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Pause for next topic.
Okay, hearing no other comments, we'll move on to grading and assessment update.
Dr. Yessenia Sanchez.
Yessenia.
Yes, so since the last update in May, we kind of introduced you to the pilot program that we're running, and we've had 101 teachers join the pilot. Thirty-two individual teachers, nine partial course teams, and 43 full course teams. Sixty-five are, sixty-five of the courses are at Vernon Hills, and 19 of them are at Libertyville High School. And we have courses from English to the ESL courses to the CTE, Social Studies, Word Languages. We have a good representation of the content areas. So in June, many of our pilot participants completed summer curriculum hours to incorporate the grading and assessment beliefs and parameters into their syllabi. Charlotte and I have been reviewing and giving feedback, and that work was to be completed by June 30th. And so we've also been working with Kate and our tech program department so that we are building the scales in Power School. So ideally, teachers, we're working on the spreadsheet that will identify what grading scale the teacher or the full course team or the partial team has selected, and when they log in, it will already be there for them versus them having to build it. So that is one of the things that we're working on finishing up, as well as developing what that professional development is going to look like those first couple of days so that they have the support needed on how to use the grading scale, because there will be a couple of options that they'll get to personalize in terms of like, if we're going to take the median for this proficiency scale or, you know, those types of things. And so those are the things that we're working to finish before the first institute day. Yeah, so that's our update.
Jim Batson.
Thank you. Is there any concern with the somewhat lower number of participants at Libertyville?
Yeah, that's my question.
Dr. Yessenia Sanchez.
I think we had a good representation on our committee, and a majority of the folks that are piloting are from the committee. I really don't know why it wasn't as appealing to the rest of the staff.
Don Carmichael.
Do we have a plan over the course of the coming year to continue to provide staff development time for teachers who are going to have to implement this the following year so that it's not all being crammed into a couple of days right before the beginning of school in 2024?
Yeah, so there is a plan that we're, and our grading and assessment committee is going to continue to meet throughout the year, next year, to fully develop that and to finish, finish that plan, but also to start working on it and implementing that and delivering that professional development. So we do have a plan that encompasses professional development throughout the school year so that everybody feels ready for next year.
Because that's, there's not a lot of professional development time, and you have a lot of things on your plate, so I want, I'll just say again, I strongly support as many summer curriculum hours next year as teachers need in order to get up to speed. We should not be stingy there. But yeah, any time that we can find during the course of the year, because it's going to be hard for some.
Yeah, so we're also looking at our professional development structures and things that we can leverage next year. So we're planning on using some of the department time that happens on those Wednesdays. We can't touch the PLC time, but we are planning on using some of the department time. And at Vernon Hills, they had already allocated that to the Marzano Chords that they use, but they very willingly and gracefully gave that up so that we can use some of those days for professional learning for some of the new initiatives, including the grading and assessment. So we are working on developing some of those structures.
Do teacher teams have the ability to use PLC time if they choose to?
Dr. Denise Herman.
Yes, absolutely. The teachers set the agenda for the PLC meetings. They need to be aligned, yeah, the agenda needs to be aligned with the district and site goals, but the actual agenda, the work that teachers choose to do is determined by the teacher group.
Right.
Cara Drumke. I was also pretty concerned at the discrepancy between Vernon Hills participants and LA test participants, and especially when we're making changes like this. I think the biggest advertisement is the sharing of information between those that are doing it and those that are not. So are we going to make sure that there is already prescribed time for those? I mean, that's how people get on board, is they see that it's not as scary as they thought. So is that a part of their, either their Wednesdays or the professional development for those that are utilizing the grading to be sharing how it's going with those that are not?
Yeah, so we were planning, we're planning on collecting data continuously and then sharing with everyone. I think we could add an additional layer.
I think we're hearing we're not very personal, so I'm, maybe we need to make it more personal so that they, you know, to make sure that they have the time to discuss that, because if it's working, that's going to be the biggest advertisement.
I think that's an excellent point, and as a teacher, you know that hearing from another teacher, their story is much better than being told by anyone else that they should be excited about changing a practice that they've been utilizing for perhaps their whole career.
Dr. Denise Herman.
I imagine the grading and assessment committee putting together little vignettes or little video diaries of the people who are doing it and having that be accessible to all staff, definitely wanting to share both, I mean, the successes and some of the challenges, because people need to understand both, what's working well and how difficult some parts were. So when they face that same challenge in the spring and the summer and next fall, they know that they're not alone and that there are others who have made their way through.
Don Carmichael.
Do we also support release time during the school year? Like if teachers need time, they could get a day off, hire subs, and they can work during the school year towards.
We typically have that as an option for committee work. I think that that would be one of the things that the grading and assessment committee would probably want to put on a menu of support choices for teams, especially at crunch time where you're doing something different, you know, end of the semester kind of work, or any other key time where the team might know an hour or two of work time would save them, you know, countless hours on the backend. They could collaborate in addition to the time they have on Wednesday morning.
Sonal Kulcarney. The other thing is the teachers who are on this pilot program effectively become your change champions, so they are there kind of, even when you get into implementation to answer questions and have office hours, I mean, that's kind of how you make this more palatable to everybody. So I think whatever time they need to allocate for that work, you know, has to also be thought about.
Lisa Hessel.
Okay, so we will.
Remind me how long the committee is envisioned to be convened?
So we plan on working all throughout next school year. I don't know where we'll be at the end of next year, but I don't, I don't, if we, if we need to continue the committee, I don't see the folks on there saying, no, we're like completely.
Well, I definitely think it will need to be through fall of '24. With Implementation Science, it says that's the most important time where any initiative needs the most support is the critical first few months of implementation. So we might have some people say after two years, this is a long engagement. We would welcome people to continue on as sort of like implementation coaches, feedback kind of mentors, and even just, again, helping to make sense of that feedback and adjust along the way. So if it's a portion of that group, we definitely want to continue to have teacher voice and staff voice as we implement in the fall of 2024.
Because I would imagine it's, it's an iterative process.
Mm-hmm, yes. So I do think it is going to be important to have that support, and hopefully the majority of our folks will still be willing.
Jim Batson.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Pause for discussion.
Moving on, then, community education program update, this should be quick.
Thank you. So I included in the, in the board packet and the public comment, the updates to our community education websites that have been done. So as community education discontinued at the end of June, so we have, I've updated our websites to include the information about the program ending, but included links to other local community programs. Also have, underneath the community umbrella, there's information about obviously Foundation for Learning, facility rentals, summer camps, and then also updated the information on North Southern Wind Ensemble that District 128 has taken over from community education. So that information is all updated on the website, including the rehearsal when that starts, when fall registration opens, and the 2023-24 concert schedule. You know, again, we're currently working and have agreements with the Village of Vernon Hills. They utilize our swimming pool for their swimming program. They can also, and we use some of their facilities, they can also use our facilities for any of their programs. Right now, they're not using it as much because they do have more facilities, and they want obviously people to use their facilities, but I think as maybe their program grows a little bit, they may have to tap into that. I met last week with the new Recreation Director at Village of Libertyville, Matt Laporte. They've been using our facilities already a little bit, but Libertyville is a little different. They have a recreation department, and they don't have a park district, but they're trying to expand and do more. We had a great conversation about our facilities, and he's getting to know the Village of what facilities we also use in the village, from Adler Park to Riverside to Canterbury to Dowden. So we want to keep working on that partnership. So actually, you'll probably see intergovernmental agreement coming. We have one with Village of Vernon Hills. We were waiting because I knew there was going to be changes with them on facilities, and he's looking then to expand some of their programs in, like the cooking, the woodworking more into our building. So great conversation. He also is going to be meeting with John Woods with Athletics to continue that partnership that we have with those facilities, and then John Fishall Rental. So, you know, I think we're off to a good start to help support our community and keep these programs going. And both villages reached out to all of our instructors, and then those that were interested in continuing. So that's kind of our update, and I'll keep you updated, and you'll see some more updates, I think, coming more from the Village of Libertyville on, you know, some of that stuff.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Pause for discussion and questions.
Just thank you for your continued efforts on that, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Board Policy Press Plus update.
Brian Kelly.
So a little background again, we are changing over to Press Plus, which will help us to keep our board policies updated. I think it'll help as each update comes in, which is generally about three to four a year from Press. And so part of that process was to do an extensive review of, I think, our current policies, some of our procedures, some of the things that we have in place that are unique as a high school district and also unique to District 128. Don graciously joined us at our Board Policy Committee meeting, which was a public meeting on June 12th, and we spent time with the Director of Policy Services, Tammy Eng, and we spent time reviewing our current board policies. She, again, got a lot, she asked general questions about just District 128, I think, some background. She had a lot of it because I had provided some of it. She got a lot off of our websites of information. And so surprisingly, we actually got our first draft July 19th, which was sooner, I think, than we expected, but she was also trying to get it so that it could be presented to this meeting. And so I shared a first draft. It's a, quite a huge document there.
It's only 480 pages.
So, you know, so it's a, it's a long document. We are going to start going through it. We are going to start going through it. One of the things that, you know, we'll do a comparison of our current ones and what we have now. And then I will also go through, for example, Section 5 Personnel. I'll do a deeper dive myself. I'll tap into Yessenia to look into Section 6 on instruction, Dan, Section 4 and so forth. And so our staff would split up and do a deeper dive into that. Again, I just got this last week. And then you are welcome to go through as much as you can. There is a worksheet that I included that if somebody does find something, all you have to do is put it on that worksheet and send it back to Carol and I and we can go through that. And then our goal, we have time from now, we have, I think, 90 days to then come back. And our next meeting, September 12th. So if we have any updates before September 12th, we can get them to her, she'll update them. If not, we'll, about three hour meeting on September 12th, a more deeper dive. Carol, Don, anyone else that's welcome to join us at that Board Policy Committee meeting. So I'm excited. I, I think we were able to, she had a lot of questions that went back and forth. And I was able to also connect with John Fester, our board attorney, because there are some board specific questions that I had to ask him. But we were able to, I think, do a deep dive into.
Can you remind the board and the public why switching to this platform will be beneficial to especially Carol, but you also as well as the public?
So one of the things that we do right now is that when we get Press updates, I go through them individually. Mark got a sheet of paper that we're going to update, give it to Carol, who puts it into a Word document to compare to the current one. And then we look at the updates, whether or not we should do them. Sometimes they're optional, sometimes depending if we missed an update the last time or we have some District 128 language in there, Carol, then I sit down and go through it again in a Google, Microsoft Word and see if we're going to make the updates or give them to you guys. And then she has to upload them into Press Plus. The new one, it'll all be in one system that we can say, yes, we want to accept that. We want to accept that and we're not. We're just, it was a lot of manual entry. The other nice thing was it did give us an opportunity to go through. And I think there were some board policies that needed to be updated that had been missed either in the three year review, five year review, or because Press just never put out an update. But it gave us a chance, I think, to.
And she knows so much about policy that she could look at everything that we had and.
Yeah, I was amazed.
It was nice that she was like, oh, you guys are doing great. You, you've got this in place, you've got that. So, I mean, it, it did a nice job of helping us to, to value the work that had been done already and to, to kind of relax a little bit that we're not in the position that some people are in.
Yeah, I, you know, Tammy did say that we're in a good spot. And I was amazed that her, obviously this is what she does and she's the Director of Policy Services. But I was just amazed that her just extensive knowledge of.
And you're meeting with her again when?
September 12th.
So we should have plenty of time to review the draft and put any suggested updates in the spreadsheet that you provided in Board Box by September 11th.
Yes.
And most of it is stuff you've already read, so and there weren't any changes. So it should go quickly.
Even just the table of contents is an improvement. Because of course, in our current version, you can go to a search bar and enter any term you want. But having a table of contents that you could refer to if you weren't exactly sure how to phrase what you were looking for is also very helpful. Because sometimes there are multiple sections that could touch on what you're looking for. So that in and of itself, I think, is helpful.
We did have a couple of outdated policies that when policies, and I checked with John Fester, there was two in particular that had been incorporated into new policies. And he's like, yeah, you, you don't need that anymore. It's an old one, but somehow it just kept going on and so.
And then the end result of this, are we going to adopt like all of them at once?
We would adopt it all at once.
Because she was very clear, this is not ready for adoption on that. So at some board meeting, we will vote to adopt all of them.
Would be, I think, is our goal is to adopt it all at once.
And then this will be plugged into the Press Online, Policy Online.
Correct.
Application.
And then will that affect how we as a board receive our updates as we go through on a two-year cycle?
No, I, I mean, we'll still, we'll, we'll restart that cycle. So I'll get that going again and then make sure.
And then in terms of the mechanics of how we receive what we're going to review, will that make it easier?
I don't think that, because all I did was just go into like Section 2 and then print out Section 2 for you to be able to read in your, in your two-year review. So I don't think that would change.
I think a lot of the benefit is the backend stuff that we don't see. By the time we see it, it's here, this is the recommendation and approve it or not.
Basically, it was, you know, for what we're spending on that, you know, expansion in Press Plus, it was very little money for the amount of, you know, I think, benefit that we get in making sure that our policies are updated.
Because as important as our policies are, you and Carol both have a lot of things you do with your time. So freeing up some of that to take, you know, some of this administrative burden, I think, will be very welcome. So thank you for your efforts on this. And thank you, Don, for being our board representative and putting in the extra time to help with this.
I can't even imagine a district that wouldn't use the Press Policy Service and how difficult that might be.
Keeping up with all the changes?
Yeah, yeah. Writing your own policies and keeping up, be crazy. So, no, thank you. It's, it's such a huge task and a very tedious task, so we appreciate it. Calendar Committee update.
We have a presentation that we're going to go through.
Pause to put up presentation on screen.
The calendar.
Interrupting.
Thank you.
He's getting there.
Pause to put up presentation on screen.
Oh, it's in here.
Pause to put up presentation on screen. Dr. Yessenia Sanchez.
So today we're going to give you an update on all the work we've been doing with the, the school calendar. So in our last update in May, we shared that we would be reaching out to student families through the registration process as well as staff. So during the presentation today, we're going to review the background of the process, kind of remind you of the guidelines and the committee's possible recommendations and then show the data that we collected with you. So this is a timeline on this slide and the next slide, there's a timeline of the developments that we, that recently occurred in the district during the, regarding the school calendar, which led to the need for the Calendar Committee to review our creation, our calendar creation guidelines and explore the possible procedures as we move forward when considering additional non-attendance days. So this is just a continuation of the timeline. Before we get started to the data, we, I would like to review what the calendar process is in the district. So we'd like to start with the number of calendars days that are required. And so in alignment with the State Board of Education and then our contract, we require 178 instructional days for students. Our agreement with teachers caps the number of teacher workdays at 184. And we, we do meet that annually. So that includes 178 instructional days, the four institute days, and then the grading days. So the allocation of those days is then applied to our calendar guidance, which are listed on this slide and, and impact the development of the calendar. So the items in the box are non-negotiable for us as a district. So this is, there was a prior Calendar Committee that looked at when we end the first semester and came to the conclusion that it is best that we end it prior to winter break. So that's kids take their final exams prior to a winter break. It also aligns with the collegiate semester model. And as much as possible, we try to balance the 178 days equally between Semester 1 and Semester 2. Although sometimes we don't, we're a little off by one or two days. But we do try to balance this, balance them as much as possible. And there are also some holidays that we are contractually and required by law to close on. So I'm going to pass it over to Larry for the next slide. He's going to go over some of the data that was gathered.
Thank you. So during the registration process, we asked our D128 families to provide some input in prioritizing our calendar creation guidelines. We had about 15% of our families to share their thoughts with us and.
Did you say 15, 1, 5?
Yes. About 15%, that's 474 families participated in providing, in sharing their thoughts with us. But this 15% represented, within this 15%, it was a fairly equal distribution between Libertyville and Vernon Hills families as well as an equally distributed group of families representing each grade level. So in these results, overwhelmingly, the first priority submitted was that the school year should start no earlier than the second week of August. The second priority that rose from this data was that the school year should end prior to Memorial Day. And then the third priority was that non-attendance days should be used to allow students to celebrate religious holidays without missing instructional time. So that is how the families who participated in providing input rate and rated these three guideline options.
I just want to remind the, the board that we did embed this survey in the registration process to try and capture as many parent responses as possible. It could not be a required field, however. But just so you know, 15%, I wish it were higher, but that, that was the absolute best way for us to gather as much parent feedback as possible.
Is that the same number of people who have registered though?
That's 15% of those registered. So we had 2,993 registrations completed. And of that, 474 opted to, to provide input on the calendar guidelines. Now I'd like to walk you through a sample school year calendar, looking at 2025, 2026. Again, this is just a sample calendar and it is only for demonstration purposes. It simply serves to show you, to show us how the 178 student attendance days could possibly be distributed. So let's start by accounting for the required non-attendance days. Let's start by accounting for the required non-attendance day. So the first one in that year would be September the 1st, the Labor Day holiday. And then our contractual closure, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And then of course, the Thanksgiving Day and the day after Thanksgiving. Then December 25th is a state required closure, which is also falls within our winter break. And January the 1st is a state required closure, which still falls within our winter break. State requires us to close for Martin Luther King Day on January the 19th and Memorial Day on May the 25th. So those are our required dates. Now I'd like to highlight December the 19th as the last day of Semester 1. This is important to us because of those non-negotiables that Dr. Sanchez mentioned. We stated that it was important to D128 that we end the semester before going on break for winter and also trying as best as we can to equally distribute the 178 student days between semesters, meaning that ideally we strive to have, to allocate 89 days per day. So we would need to start at the December 22nd date and count backwards 89 instructional days, excluding those days that we're required to close to determine what our start date would be. Now, we're going to add in some of the non-required holidays. September the 24th would be our, one of the Jewish holidays of Rosh Hashanah. October 2nd, Yom Kippur, and considering October 20th, Diwali. Once we remove those days from that calendar, that process of backwards mapping would require the first day for student attendance to be August the 6th, which does not meet the first priority of our families that were, that responded to our survey. So with these holidays in Semester 1, and we also have to consider two more teacher days, which is the grading day, which is the very last day of the semester. And we also have one institute day. Now that institute day in this example is set on August 28th. That's an arbitrary date, we can move that wherever we need to move it. But somewhere in the semester, there will need to be a teacher institute day. But that doesn't change the fact that that start date would still remain the same. We're just moving the, moving that institute day anywhere within it. We still have to account for it somewhere. And then of course, second semester would include March 20th, which would be the day for Eid recognition. And then April 3rd, which would be our day for Good Friday. It would allow us to end school prior to the Memorial Day holiday. 2025 is important because it represents a year when most of these required and non-required holidays fall on weekdays. And that's what led the Calendar Committee to the recommendation of transitioning to an instructional operability model. Understanding that as a district, we should establish that a school closure is warranted based on the operational need. And that need for this committee has been the likelihood of high absenteeism for our staff, which would impact our ability to provide high quality instruction or the high likelihood of absentee for our students, which also would impact our ability to provide high quality instruction. This model fits within the parameters of the calendar guidelines. It prioritizes our instructional operation of schools and it establishes for us an objective criteria for designating non-attendance days moving forward. So any, as we looked at that timeline in the past, as we consider what days we need to add as non-instructional days or non, non-attendance days for our students, it gives us some criteria to, to, to utilize to objectively determine if we will accept that day as a non-attendance day. Keep in mind though, that the district does provide allowance for excused religious holiday absences for staff and students as well. And so just to review, we went over these guidelines and made these, these are the thresholds that the Calendar Committee recommended. And based on our ability to secure substitute coverage as a district, the committee determined that 30 teachers observing a religious holiday on any given day plus the district average of unexpected but anticipated sick days would give us the threshold of not being able to provide high quality instruction and would inhibit the district from providing a normal instructional setting for students. And on any given, I averaged for 2022, 2023, the sick days was 8%. And considering the 30 teachers being absent, that would be 12%. And so that would give us a total anticipated of about 20% of our teachers possibly being absent on any one of these days, which would provide a critical, critical flaw for us to be able to provide instruction. Then with our students, we identified that at least 60% of students at each school must indicate that they will attend school on any given religious holiday. That being if student, if less than 60% at Vernon Hills or less than 60% at Libertyville indicate that they would need to observe a religious holiday, they would be absent that day, that we would not have school at either campus. And so an average class size, that means that of 24 students, the 60% is 15 are present that day. And, and 10 being absent for a religious holiday. Overall, our attendance rate for students is 92%. So on any given day, our average absence rate for students is 8%, not including those students who may be observing a religious holiday. Now Illinois law requires that 50% of the students be present in order for us to count the day as an attendance day. Our neighboring states, Michigan requires 75% of students to be present. But neither Indiana nor Wisconsin establishes a minimum threshold for, for attendance day counts. And so for my teachers that we surveyed, now we. And so for my teachers that we surveyed, now we, we disaggregated this data to only show the teachers. We surveyed all staff members, but in order for us to apply the thresholds, we needed to only look at what staff members would be impacted. Their absence would impact our ability to provide instruction in the classroom. So we pulled out teachers only. And applying that threshold, the days that would surpass would be Christmas, which is one of the federal holidays we would be required to be closed. Easter, which always falls on a Sunday, so it would not impact us. But Good Friday would be the day that we currently do not have students in attendance. And based on our data from our 12-month employees, we would, and their absences, we would not be able to operate on Good Friday. And although Ash Wednesday, as indicated in this survey, is approaching a threshold, in the past school year 2023, Good Friday, we had no staff members to request a religious holiday.
For Ash Wednesday?
For Ash Wednesday. So even though they indicated, even though it's indicated in the survey that it's approaching, in, in actual practice, we have not had any.
Pause for slide.
And then that survey is based on the number of teachers, because we did determine that the number of teachers that needed to be absent was 30. But students though, we looked at the percentage of students surveyed, those families that completed the survey. And of the, of the families who completed the survey, the threshold set for 40%, so more than 40% of our families indicated that their child would stay home in order to participate and observe, would miss school in order to participate and observe a religious holiday. The two that met that threshold are also two days that would not impact our ability to provide instruction, because they fall on one of the, the federal holidays, Christmas and the Sunday of Easter.
Pause for slide.
And so our next steps, now that we have collected this data, is to reconvene our calendar committee and finalize those guidelines based on the feedback that we've received and, and as well as the survey data that we've collected. And then the calendar committee will submit those recommendations to the district leadership team. And then it will be brought to this board. And then we will be looking to amend or adopt the school year calendars for 2024, 2025, using the calendar creation guidelines that we will have established.
25, 26.
2024, 2025, 2025, 2026, two years.
Jim Batson.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions, comments from the board?
Lisa Hessel.
Are we going to continue asking for this data at registration each year?
Larry Varn.
Yes, it'll be an annual collection.
Sunal Kulkarni.
Is there a reason why it could not be a required field?
Pause for answer.
Larry, can you answer that why it wasn't ever, well, I think it was at the time.
Because we're collecting data on, we're collecting personal data on people's religion and their religious preferences. So we can't legally require them to answer those questions.
Could you have added, "I do not wish to answer" option and make that a required field? So people are forced to answer it and they can say, "I don't want to answer."
That was one of the options in the survey that we had, but our attorney advised us not to make it a required survey.
It was also just logistics. At the, the time that we wanted to add the survey was great. However, planning for registration, getting that stuff set up happens months and months in advance. And there was no time to even be able to figure out how to incorporate something like that to be required, even in the, just functionally being able to do it in that timeframe.
And if someone refused to answer, even if there was an option to say, "No, I don't want to answer", they can't continue with the registration and we need them to continue with registration above everything else. So I, I think there's, yeah, maybe there's a better way to do that, that we can encourage. Or, you know, theoretically, if we use this data to generate, you know, the calendar and people realize that, I think it'll be more important and I think they'll be more willing to share the information needed. I guess I'm, I'm thinking if we're intending to use that in some way for future calendars, by the time we gather this data, it's too late to set the calendar for the next year. So I'm, I'm just not too sure how that whole process will, you know, feed the data for the following year, but.
Casey Rooney.
I think it's more about establishing a trend.
Yeah.
And establishing a pattern of the data versus a single snapshot of a year. And designing the calendar based on these carefully thought out guidelines. Keep in mind that we will still have days off, non-attendance days that we have to allocate in the calendar. It will free up our ability to allocate days where we see fit.
Could you give an example of how that might look? Like what would be an example of that?
A day after a parent-teacher conference or something?
It could be, I mean, we could, we could use them in the week of Thanksgiving. We could take a look at some of these days where we may not hit an established threshold, but there's still a quant, a significant quantity of folks that might be requesting those days off. And we could use those, this is, this is how Stevenson does it. They use those non-attendance days to allocate for those days where there are some significant absences. And one other point, the thresholds that we've established, if any of them are met, be it teachers or students, that counts as a non-attendance day. Does that make sense? Yeah, for both schools, either school really. So any, any hit on the threshold makes that a non-attendance day. Does that make sense?
Larry Varn.
And to add on to what, what Ms. Rooney is saying is the 89 days per semester or the 178 days per year does not change. It is, it's standard. So it's just a matter of how we allocate that. So if, if, if some days that we currently observe as non-attendance days, we decide not to, that gives us an option to either start school later, because we still are going to have, we still count backwards from that end of semester, those 89 days. So either having days off means that we don't count the day that we have off. That pushes us to a day earlier that we need to start. Or it gives us the flexibility of where we, how we schedule our days within the calendar.
Yeah, in some cases, depending on the year, like you say, this is probably the worst case scenario in terms of the years, how the, the calendar falls.
Yes.
So there may be some years that's a little more flexible. But I mean, in reality, if we could take all those days off, we just have to start a school year in mid-June.
Right. You get two days off.
Yeah, yeah, you get two days.
Now, I, I think that the most important part of this to me, and I've participated in this for many years now, is we needed to have a, a specific guidelines on how we, we address non-attendance days. We have never really dove into it. And I know how much work these two have put into this in terms of gathering data. So like we said, this is, this is our first attempt at, let's get the data. Let's get people used to seeing that on registration. And once they understand that we actually are using this data for something, this is, this is applying to decisions that we are making. I think that we will continue to see that number go up in terms of people that are willing to give us that information. And, you know, there's a lot of documents in registration. When you look at like the seven or eight things they have to click on, I get it. But this is important information that helps us inform our decisions, so.
Yeah, because we need that number of days no matter what. So, so on how we put the calendar together, so.
I have a quick procedural question.
Don Carmichael.
Presentation that we just saw is under administrative content in board docs. That should be made public. Is that something that would normally happen prior to the meeting? But now that it's actually been seen in public.
I didn't notice that.
Because we have people here that have computers out, but they don't have access to what we're seeing.
Right. I, right, I was not a part of the review of the, I was in California last week for vacation. So I apologize for not catching that. Our default should always be that attachments or anything that goes to the board is also for the public. The exception would be things that truly are confidential. And that's where we should place the administrative content. So yes, we will make sure that that is moved, so everyone will be able to see the presentation. Yeah. Good catch.
Yeah, good catch. Thanks.
I just want to mention, I am disappointed that we have to make such a big decision based on 15%. I understand that we can only ask for the information, we can't demand it. I worry that we'll receive, receive some criticism that perhaps people didn't understand how we would be using that data we were asking for to make such an important decision. Whether or not that would have changed the information, I can't predict. But 15% is a low number. And I hope that we will continue to ask the question, continue to get a higher percentage of responses. Because again, I, I don't know whether or not that would change the outcome. Perhaps it would, perhaps it wouldn't. But until we start reaching greater numbers of data, we, we're trying to make a data-driven decision. But making it based on, you know, 15% of our population, it is a little disappointing. And that's no one's fault. It's just the reality.
Did the question state that these, these, the answers were going to be used to determine the calendar?
Okay.
Larry, this is a little, little question and maybe it's in here and I just didn't see it. When you say 15%, you're, are you talking about, so for seven straight years, I was registering two kids. Would my answer count as of the families or of the kid, of the students? You know what I mean? The total students or total families?
Each student. So each, each family has to register each student individually. So if, if, for example, I had multiple students, multiple children enrolled in district, I would have been asked to complete the survey with each registration.
Casey Rooney.
Because I can tell you how I would have done it. I would have answered it once. So there is a possibility that our numbers are a little bit skewed if somebody went in there and had multiple kids. They were, oh wait, I already answered that. I don't have to answer that again. And it's not, it's not prompting me to make that required. So if I've already answered it, that would have been in my head, but I can't speak for everybody.
Larry, could you make a note to send the board the exact question? Because Larry and Yucenia worked very hard on how that question should be answered, so we can send that via email to all of you. And then the second thing would be to find out the number of families and what percent that really is. You know, if it was 300 and some that responded.
2,993 families completed registration.
That's students, not families.
Students, yes, yes, yes.
So, but how many families do we have? It should be, because some have two kids, three kids, this or that. So I think we'll get a more accurate percentage if we are, if we use that as the divisor. Still, we want more, but I do think that would, would give us a little bit.
Yeah, we still, we still want to continue to see that, that number grow. But unfortunately, with the need for time management in terms of the 25, 26 calendar and the fact that that one was kind of our, that was really our roadblock, where it becomes the perfect storm of all non-attendance days happen on school days. And I do believe that based on the survey, even at 15%, our community was very clear that they do not want school to start on August 6th. So.
Yeah. I, you know, and I appreciate your comment and I agree, 15% is pretty low. 15% for a standard survey is actually a pretty good number for any other survey. Yeah, yeah.
Surveys go.
Yeah, surveys go. But I, I think what's, what's helpful here is to know that it was equally distributed between the buildings, equally distributed amongst the grade levels. So we have some idea that this is not just, you know, some small group of, you know, it was not all seniors or it was not all Libertyville parents. It was, it was, you know, that, whatever that consolation may be, but.
A representative distribution, which is, which is what we want.
Some information's better than no information.
Got to start somewhere.
Yeah.
Which I actually found interesting because the demographics of both schools are pretty different, that they answered the same way. I'm not sure how to square that in my mind yet.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Jim Batson.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Moving on, joint annual conference. I think this is just a point of reference, looking forward.
Brian Kelly.
Yeah, so Carol added some of the information in there on the conference for November 18th, 19th, some of the Friday Focus workshops and the Equity Immersion Workshop, which is separate this year. It starts on Thursday, November 16th. So if you are still interested in attending any of those things, if you can get that information to Carol.
Jim Batson.
Okay. Moving on, EdRed membership. This will be an approval that we'll talk, we'll address later in the board meeting, will approve later in the board meeting. Any, in the essence of time, any questions or comments about this? This is just something we do every year.
Pause for discussion.
Moving on, employment of employees.
Brian Kelly.
Under employment employees, there is one change that we need to make. We had a, if you see, under certified staff, we had a TBD for school counselor. We have not finalized that, so I don't have a recommendation for the board meeting tonight. We put it as TBD. We were hoping to have that finalized. So if we put it on the board agenda as TBD, I could add a name. I do not have that, but we will have that school counselor identified for the start of school. And that is our last remaining certified teaching position to, to, full-time position to fill.
Okay. Questions, comments on that?
Does that affect?
Don Carmichael.
Like, do we have to say as amended?
So this is, this will go into the consent agenda with that basically being crossed off.
Okay.
So obviously, we are going into the new meeting right after this. Normally, that wouldn't even be on there, but we will have it cross off. And if, if you want to say, you know, as amended during PMP with a TBD removed, then I think we're covered.
Jim Batson.
Okay, educational tours, there's a couple here, choir retreat and the Theater Fest.
Yeah, so the Theater Fest is for the Black Light Theatre students at Vernon Hills High School. And that's for the High School Theater Festival at ISU in Bloomington in January. And then the choir is for a day camp in Wisconsin, September 9th through September 10th. And we are working with our folks at Qualtrics to create an ed tour form that will allow us to have more consistency across all the requests, so that the itineraries all are completed in a certain way, the budget sheets are all completed in a certain way, as well as the way the, the forms are routed. Right now, we have a lot of that. Our work falls on Michelle, our Teaching and Learning Administrative Assistant. So we're trying to build in some, the, the flow of the form in a way that it will relieve some of that from her. So we're actually meeting with our folks on Thursday to see how that's going. But I'm excited that next year we'll have more consistency across how we bring them to you.
Well, I appreciate your efforts to improve that system. You already improved it based on the financial information that you're providing and having more standardized information than we received in years past. So that continued improvement to the system to standardize it is very appreciated.
Jim Batson.
Yes, thank you. So these will be on the consent agenda. Any comments or concerns on either one? Okay. Future agenda items, there's a few things here listed to look forward to. Anything else for the good of the cause, so we can keep moving? Okay, I will call the program personnel meeting adjourned and hand it over to Casey for the facilities and finance.
Casey Rooney.
This calls to order the facilities and finance committee meeting for Monday, July 24th. It is 7:03, give or take. We've already handled the pledge and I apologize for my tardiness. If you want, I can just stand up and say it. There you go. Invitation for public comment. Is there anyone present that would like to offer public comment for facilities and finance?
Pause for public.
No takers? All right, we will move on.
No takers, all right, we will move on to items for discussion. Item A, a resolution authorizing participation in the ComEd Green Region Program for the Butler Lake Shoreline Restoration Project. That is a mouthful, but this is a very impressive project.
Yeah, you've seen information from Dr. Khan before about what they're doing, and so she applied for this grant, and she got it. And they sent the check, two things they are asking for. I'm going to receive the check as one, that we acknowledge that we received the check, which is easy, because we received the check, so we told them that. And the second one is they're asking for a resolution, essentially from the board saying, we're, we agree with them doing this, we accept the money, and there's the matching part. And Dr. Khan was very, wanted to really note the matching money that's mentioned there, that's money, matching money that she's raised elsewhere. So this is not like, we have to come up with an additional, so she kind of listed all that information.
But that was an impressive list of the matching funds.
Yes.
Kudos to her, that had to be.
I got to be honest, the accounting is extremely impressive. I've seen her sheets before, and they're very well done. So I think this is very exciting, and so it should be pretty straightforward.
By the way, she's on a research vessel out in Lake Michigan. Just, of course she is.
It's awesome.
That's fantastic. Any, any questions other than kudos to Ecos Club and Dr. Khan for their fantastic work?
Pause for discussion and questions.
All right, so we will see that resolution here shortly in the regular board meeting. Moving on to item B, rental labor charge rates for fiscal year 2024.
So this is an annual process we go through comparing our, when people rent the facilities and there's staff required for those rentals, what rates do we charge people? We do that based on people that are here and the people that are working, and we try to kind of build in a normal margin, I think it's 14% that we do. And so that's really how we standardize that. If we have people in those particular departments, in those particular areas that aren't earning that much, we've really kind of paused any changes to that. And honestly, for some of them, there might be several years since we've actually utilized any of them. Cafeteria labor is one example. So, but we're sticking with them for now. And so John, John Heron in the Business Office puts this together, we use it with Bryant, and then I'll review it as well for recommendations. One thing that's different is there has been a slight difference, change in our IMRF rate that went down. So that, so we're, we're trying to do it based on a kind of a cost-plus model. So if that goes down, then we're going to respond to that. So it incorporates the people that are here, the raises that we actually had, plus a margin on top, and the benefit costs associated with those positions.
Casey Rooney.
Looks good. Any questions?
Not for me.
Is this something, are we voting on this one?
Yes.
Okay. I couldn't get my computer to go that far ahead. All righty, moving on to item C, Summer 2023 Capital Projects Update. Thank you for the pictures. Also, I'm such a visual learner, I really, I really appreciate that.
Kind of like the tile work, Mark.
Yeah.
So, so you've got the update, you've got the update from Mark with the attachment and pictures. Mark's done a great job of trying to collect it, we've worked together to try to get this in a visible form that you can see what's going on. So I guess Mark.
Mark Koobman.
Everything's been going well this summer. Obviously, school starts in a couple of weeks. Yeah. Our project that's outstanding, the biggest of water fountains in the washrooms at Libertyville. A lot of progress going on there, even from the pictures I took. I waited till Wednesday afternoon to do it, you know, a lot of progress in sense. Moving forward very well.
Casey Rooney.
So these projects that kind of are starting, the stadium scoreboard replacement, the varsity baseball turf that are starting as school is starting, are those fairly quick projects? I would imagine the scoreboard.
Yeah, the scoreboard is a two-day project. I don't remember if I put the dates in, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, you said it's starting on August 10th.
They're going to come take the one down, put the other one in. And then the softball infield, or the baseball infield, it's a couple-week project, but it's the field's not being used, so it's behind the stadiums.
Falls the time to do.
Falls the time to do it, you know, they had.
Oh, okay.
They had, you know, we have participated confusing the field, I believe, a couple more times. I think it's three more times.
Okay.
Before then.
Oh, for the summer stuff, yeah, see.
And then our weight room will start next Monday morning at Vernon Hills Flooring Replacement there. I gave you pictures of the weights being gone, and then we'll get pictures once the new floors.
Casey Rooney.
We will look forward to that, thank you. Any questions? Moving on to item.
Maybe a washroom tour?
Yeah.
August?
Will be there.
We'll take our own tours, don't worry. You know we love our field trips.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item D, fiscal year 2023 budget performance.
So I wanted to put together a brief summary to give you all a sense of fiscal year is done, what happened? One, this is not audited, and two, it's actually not even totally closed yet, we're still tweaking, but these are basically the numbers. Overall, I was pleased with the results. A lot of the things that we saw back in December materialized. Not everything was exactly the same, but in general, I was, I was very pleased with how things are trending based on how we saw mid-year. You know, one of the, one of the, there's pros to doing a budget early, one of the cons is we're guessing on some of these numbers. And so as the year progresses, we'll get more clarity on what the numbers, for example, CPRT. I won't even get an estimate from the Department of Revenue until August. And so not much I can do about that, so we're, we're really guessing on CPRT. We're trying to make an informed guess, but we really are guessing. It could be down, it could be up. I'd be very surprised if it was still up, using that as an example. And so the mid-year review, I think, is really helpful, because we've seen a lot of progress for the fiscal year, and we can see where things are trending. So in a nutshell, I just wanted to highlight really three things on the revenue side. We ended up at 1 point, 100, where is it? 102% of what we, of what we budgeted, so that we came in over budget by 2 million. Really, that is because of CPRT, which, again, we talked about for the December review, is right now CPRT, what we received, the roughly 3 million. That's three times more than we normally would receive. So this is absolute, it's been an outlier for two years now. So I still am very hesitant about that source of income in terms of assuming it's going to be 3 million or more every year. Then interest income also was high. We could not have predicted last year the interest rates would stay as high for as long as they are, it's a guess, and we don't really know what they're going to be. Anybody that tells you they know what it's going to be is wrong. And actually, I was telling Denise, I was on a webinar, I participated in a webinar. When I say participated, I mean, I signed up, and then I downloaded it later so I could watch the 10 minutes I needed to watch of the Illinois Department of Revenue during their local workshop, and they talked about CPRT. And in that 10 minutes, the person that does this at the Department of Revenue said, "We have no idea what's happening." He's like, "We have no idea," he's like, "I find out, and then two days later, I send you the report." He's like, "Anybody that, anybody that says they know what's going to happen, they're wrong. Nobody knows." So, I mean, we don't know, we don't know what's going to happen for some of these. And I think interest income is one of those as well. So that's the expenditure side. We came in at 99.4% of budget, which is under budget by half a million. That's, that's very, very, very close. And so that's much tighter than we've had in years past, but that's also, that's where I'd like to see us. Because again, the part of the budget is a plan, and so we want things to happen as much as we can according to plan. I know there's sometimes variances, but, and we want to anticipate accurately. So salaries came in, salaries coming in at 99.8%, that's extremely close. Medical insurance was under budgeted. I was, I had an email to Casey, like, either this is 105% of budget, or it's 95% of budget. I've not been able to find that, that, that perfect time to get us as close. My goal is to get everything to 100 exactly. My goal is to budget for what exactly I think is going to happen. So in a perfect world, we would be 100% of budget.
I'd say you're doing pretty darn good.
Pretty close. We're doing real well. And then some of these things, electricity was huge, and so we're kind of trying to dive in to figure out exactly why that came in under budget. But other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward. So in a nutshell, we had an operating deficit of 1.9 million in the budget. What we actually had was a surplus of 670,000, 671,000. So, which is kind of where we thought we were trending. At December, I wrote, I thought it'd be a few hundred thousand. So this is real close in terms of how we, how we saw things trending at least mid-year. Yeah, that's the summary of how did the fiscal year 2023 budget perform?
Impressive.
We picked a very good year to do our accounting transition.
Yes, we did.
Exactly. Exactly, at least some of the surprises were happy surprises.
Yes. We call that luck.
Right. Excellent job. Anybody have any other questions?
No, just excellent job. Thank you for your good work on the budget and keeping us informed and using every resource you have available to make your best guess at things that you can't know with precision, I think, even though you'd like to be at 100% on everything. That's not our expectation, and we've come to be able to rely on these figures to be pretty, as close to accurate as anybody could be, so thank you.
On a 98 million budget, to come in at five, you know, 600,000 is amazing.
Pause for next topic.
All right, thank you. Item E, disposal report update.
So at the, at the June meeting, we discussed bringing back a report to show what happened, so we're working on that, but we don't, we don't have, we're still trying to get some information. People are off for summer, and so we will have something in August for you to give us. And so what we thought we would do is, for the whole year, here's the stuff the board approved, what ended up happening, so we just do that. My idea was do it once a year, so let you see whatever information that is. We have half, we have probably half the information, the other half we're still trying to find.
That's great, we appreciate it. Good to keep that out, information out in the public. All right, any questions?
Pause for discussion.
All right, moving on to future agenda items, continuing with summer capital projects updates, et cetera. Anyone have anything to add or change?
Pause for discussion.
Okay, well, then it is 7:16, and we shall adjourn the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting.
Lisa Hessel.
Excellent. Next up, we have our regular board meeting. We will take just a very quick fire break and get back to it in five minutes.
End of meeting. Fade to District 128 logo.
Yes?
Lisa Hessel.
Ah, thank you. Perfect, great, so this calls to order the regular board meeting of the Board of Education at 7:22 PM. We have already said the Pledge of Allegiance at our previous committee meetings, so we are going to go straight to roll call whenever you are ready, Carol.
Pause for roll call.
Here.
Carol Benjamin. Dan Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumkey.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Sonal Kulkarni.
Here.
Casey Rooney. Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Great, we note all members present. We're going to do a quick review of the agenda. As always, we will start off with communication and an invitation for public comment. We'll review our FOIA requests, and Dr. Herman will share some good news. We will move on to our consent vote agenda. The consent vote includes items that are routinely approved by the board with a single motion. For example, minutes destruction of closed session recordings, educational tour requests, employment matters, disposal of obsolete capital equipment, bills payable, and financial reports. These items have gone through board committee review and recommendation extensively in our committee meetings, which tonight happened just before this meeting. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members, as well as the public in advance, to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Do I hear any requests to remove any items from the consent vote agenda this evening?
No.
Seeing none, we will move on to the items for action. First, that came out of PMP, we have, oh no, I'm sorry, this is, yes, it's policy. So even though it's about financial matters, it comes out of PMP. We've got two resolutions, as well as out of FNF, a renewal of our membership in EdRed and an update to our rental labor charge rates. Then for information, we will discuss a very brief update on the social media litigation that we are participating in. We will have a superintendent's report, as well as any board comments and events. Do we have an IASB report from our delegate?
Not really tonight.
Not tonight. Do we have a CDO report from our delegate, Carol Benjamin? Nothing for tonight. So we will move on to any other reports that board members wish to share. We will review future agenda items. We do not have an executive session tonight, so we will adjourn thereafter. So heading back up to the top, do we have any members of the public wishing to address the board in public comment?
Pause for public.
Seeing none, we will move on to FOIA requests.
We received one FOIA request this month and is attached for the board's review.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, good news.
Wonderful, we had two pieces of good news to share, things that happened over the summer. First, we had 23 Vernon Hills High School Future Business Leaders of America Chapter members qualified and attended the National Leadership Conference from June 26th to July 1st in Atlanta. Over 13,000 students from around the world attended to compete, take part in workshops, and create lifelong business connections. The Vernon Hills team members received the following honors at the competition. Cameron Keough placed third in supply chain management. Emma Hoffman and Sahana Thrivel placed seventh in business management. Kirab Aurora, Matthew Ju, Neil Moody-Dedeskov placed ninth in business plan. The team is coached by Brian Voss, Melissa Amarin, and Rihanna Wile. And second, we had two Vernon Hills students selected for the 2024 All-State Theater Production of She Kills Monsters. Junior Jonathan Protus was selected for the set crew, and Ashley Roskus will play trombone in the orchestra. This is the 12th year in a row that Vernon Hills has had a student in the All-State Ensemble. The show will be performed during the Illinois High School Theater Festival, January 11th through 13th at ISU. And that's the good news for tonight.
Great, thank you. We will move on to the consent vote agenda. We will note that there is one modification for the employment of employees. We are striking the TBD. May I have a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as amended?
Carmichael, so moved. Batson, second.
Thank you, any discussion?
Pause for discussion.
Seeing none, roll call, please.
Pause for roll call.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Rooney. Aye.
Great, motion passes. Moving on to items for action, I will turn the.
I'm so sorry, y'all went a little faster than I thought. I just wanted to point out, in the bills payable report is the checks that we ran after the board meeting in June. So they were just impressed, there was like, it's like $13,000 worth. So I just wanted you to know that information was in there. That was the stuff that we ran after our June board meeting and before July. Sorry.
Great, thank you, no worries. Thank you for pointing that out for transparency. Now I will return, turn it over to Jim Batson for the action items A and B.
Okay, the first item here is a resolution for a board policy, 2:125 board member compensation expenses and 5:60 expenses. This is a resolution to regulate expense reimbursements. Bryant, do you have some background on this?
This is a yearly resolution that the board passes each year, just kind of highlighting how your expenses, for example, when you're going to the Joint Annual Conference in November, that you do get reimbursed for. Your expenses, and it outlines what you're reimbursed for, your allowable reimbursements are.
Jim Batson.
And attached is the board policy for year review that's already been approved. So this is the resolution to regulate the expense reimbursement. So can we have a motion?
I move to approve the resolution to regulate expense reimbursements for board policies, 2125 board member compensation expenses and 560 expenses.
Rooney, second.
Any questions or comments?
Pause for discussion and questions.
Okay, roll call, please, Carol.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Rooney. Aye. Batson.
Aye, motion passes. This next one is a very, a very cool thing. It's a resolution authorizing the participation in the ComEd Green Region Program related to the Butler Lake Shoreline Restoration Project. Who would have the best background spiel on this? Bryant? Bryant? Dan?
I think we could just say that Jennifer Khan with her, her, thank you, EcoSTUB, applied for this grant for Butler Lake Restoration, received it, and some private donations to fund a project that we are very proud of.
Yeah. Very cool project that I'm sure we'll hear a lot more of as it moves forward. Can I have a motion to approve this participation?
Drumke, motion to approve the resolution authorizing participation in the ComEd Green Report, Green Region Program for the Butler Lake Shoreline Restoration Project.
Carmichael, second. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Pause for discussion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumke.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Last for the program personnel is the EdRed membership for 20, school year 2324. EdRed is an advocacy organization for the state of Illinois, actually for the, representing northern regions of the Chicagoland area, and we've been a member for many, many years and look to continue that relationship. So we have a motion to approve the membership dues for the year. Carmichael, so moved.
Hessel, second.
Any questions or comments? I think most of us have participated in this group in one way or the other, so we appreciate their, their service to education. So can we have a roll call, please?
Drumke.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Motion passes, and I will hand it over to Casey Rooney for the last item here. Item D, looking for a motion to approve the recommended rental labor charge rates for fiscal year 2024.
Colcarney, so moved.
Drumke, second.
Pause for roll call.
Roll call, please. Sorry. Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumke.
Aye.
Motion passes. Any discussion? Any questions? Okay. Turning it over to Lisa for the update on social media litigation, et cetera.
Great, and I'm actually going to turn that over to Bryant for a brief update.
Sure. So our last meeting, board meeting, you adopted a resolution, and we signed an agreement to join in on the social media litigation with the fans group out of California. Since then, Dan shared actually an article from the Wall Street Journal from this weekend that, just a quick update on the litigation, and that probably later this year, it says that the judge is expected to consider a motion by the tech companies to dismiss the cases on grounds that the conduct allegedly causing the harm is protected under Internet Liability Shield known as Section 230. So it doesn't look like there's going to be an update for a while, but we have filed all the paperwork with the, you know, the law group out of California. And any updates that I get, they will communicate with me. If I'm not available, they will communicate with Dan.
Dan Stanley.
This case might have even been on the front page of the most recent-
It was.
I don't get the paper one, I get the digital one, but it was on the front digital page.
So, that's our quick update.
Great, and I am very proud that we are participating in this, in this case. Turn it over to Dr. Herman for a superintendent's-
Sure, very brief. First, again, I want to thank Mary for her excellent work with JT and completing the communication audit and the data we received, as well as the recommendations. I look forward to working with her and everyone on DLT to implement the recommendations. Second, the admin team has been working very hard over the summer to get ready for our opening days. So while we might not be in the classroom welcoming students, we are busily preparing to welcome all of our new staff at teacher, new teacher and new staff orientations. We have a third, a three-day orientation for our teaching staff and a one-day welcome for all of our non-teaching staff. And one of those days overlaps, and so that's where we do a lot of the work on our district mission and vision and other kinds of things. So great things are happening for our new staff. We also are putting together the plans for our opening day when all staff return. And I want to, and I'll send this in the Friday update, but also just alert you that you all are invited, if your schedules allow, to participate in the opening day, which will be Thursday, August 11th. We serve breakfast to everyone, and then we start in the Vernon Hills Auditorium where we do, you know, a wonderful celebration of what makes our district so great. And then we talk about key messages for the year, and then we break up into some subgroups. So if your schedule, I, thank you for correcting me. It is August 10th. I did not, I even double-checked on my phone the date, and I misspoke, so thank you. Yeah, Thursday, August 10th. So again, we've been busy getting ready for all of those things, as well as Monday, the 14th, when we welcome about 3,400 students into our doors. So that's my update for today.
And any of those, to piggyback off of, any of those opening day, whether it's with our new staff, certified staff, ESP, or any of the building meetings that John Gilliam hosts here, or Transition hosts, or Tom Klenis hosts at Libertyville, you are more than welcome to stop by. Did you get a schedule for all three? If not, I can send that on to you. I'll scan, I'll send you on the buildings. So we have three schedules, so Libertyville, Vernon Hills, and Transition. And it kind of lays out that whole, what we call opening week. So certified staff start on Monday, Tuesday, and then all of our staff, so support staff and certified staff come in Wednesday. That's all new people, and then Thursday is when everybody returns. But I will send an email tomorrow with all of the information. You're more than welcome to.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to board comments and events. I know it is the summer, and for board development, it is somewhat of a quiet period. Is there anything that any of the members would like to share?
Pause for discussion.
Seeing none, I'm going to move right on to item D, ISP report, we have none. Item E, CDO report, we have none. Do we have any other reports? Seeing a big blank stare, so we are going to move on to item six, A, future agenda items. We have items that are listed for both August committee, as well as the board meeting. And we did have a question for the board about the student board rep lunches.
Yes, yes.
Dr. Herman had an idea that I thought would be good for us to just briefly discuss together.
Right, thank you. For the last several years, we have planned the student lunches to be on the same day as committee meetings, two weeks before the agenda. So if board members are in town and would like to join us, they're able. But one of the things I was noticing is that's quite a big lead time to the actual board meeting, missing an opportunity to potentially review the agenda with the students and to potentially have some of their comments and to have them be more prepared to share student perspective or to have any of their comments directly noted to some of the matters that might come before the board. So my recommendation would be to move the student lunches to the Monday prior to the board meeting. So we would have that draft agenda. They might have drafts of what they're going to be sharing, again, to try and refine and give feedback. So we're maximizing the time that they have with us at the table, but that would prevent some of you who travel or are out of town from as easily being able to join the student lunches. Lisa, and I thought it would be good to ask for your opinion before we made that change.
So these are one week prior?
One week prior to the actual meeting, rather than two weeks prior to the actual meeting.
What does everybody think?
I think it makes sense.
Mm-hmm. I think it's a more effective use of time. Get more out of it for-
And since we sign up for these ahead of time, you know, if there's any upcoming work travel that anyone is obligated to, you can certainly schedule around it.
Okay, great. We will make that adjustment.
Does that, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I really like the idea of the student board reps being able to tailor their reports a little more closely aligned with what they know is going to be on the agenda, as opposed to sort of a free-form situation.
It also gives them several days to ask students what they think about things that are on the agenda.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for reminding us.
Because I taught high school students, and the idea that they would be ready the Monday before with their report, I think is-
I know. I know.
Maybe an outline, maybe?
But no, I think, once they hear it on Monday-
Yeah, that'll be helpful.
Then they know, kind of know what's coming up, so they can tailor their reports to be more insightful.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, great. Do we have any other comments before I set a record for current memory?
Yeah. I do have a quick procedural question.
So we have, in the last few weeks, looked at, or I should say, last few months, gone through the capital projects schedule. We've approved going ahead with three projects. So now what's the next step? Like, when do we start looking at what the projects will be for the next year?
Do you have an answer now, or were you saying that-
I'm, I'm asking, it's a procedural question. I don't know where we go from here.
Yeah, so the, the summer, the, sorry, not the summer, the, the projects that were talked about, we had a, we had a kickoff, we've had two meetings, we've got a third one later this week for the cafeteria, which is definitely the biggest project on the list. And so we're actively developing that with a big old group of people.
Dan Stanley.
I can't remember the, the other project on the list. One is bathrooms, but the bathrooms are pausing right now because there's a bill on the governor's desk that may dictate how bathrooms are done, particularly gender-neutral bathrooms with rules, so we, we don't want to get too far ahead on that. Plus, that would take several years to figure out anyways. Forgive me off the top of my head, I can't remember the third one. But what Mark and I have been, have started to talk about already, we met last week and started to talk about is a draft of what the summer plans are for next year. So what we're hoping is in September, we really have a draft of what our summer, the following summer is going to be, because we've been talking to, Mark's been talking to contractors, and like, a lot of them are going out to bid in October-ish for the following summer. So we, we know, we know we have more roofs. Roof's is going to be a continual thing in this building for several years, things like that, but we want to, we still have to get some ducks in a row. So what we'd, what we'd like to target is like September to be able to bring back an initialist of the following summer.
I also think that when Dan and I talked last about the capital outlay plan, the multi-year plan, we had estimates for what the cost of each of those projects were and selected the top three because that, right, as of right now, would probably exhaust the money that we have in savings to put towards these projects. Once we get the refined number for each of those, we'll be able to bring it back to the board and say, wow, this is over budget, or there is room to take on another project, or a third option of, we don't have the money, but these, some of these things are still very important in wanting to explore that third option. But I think right now, the front burner is getting much more clear cost estimates for the projects that the board already green-lighted.
Dan Stanley.
Yeah, so for example, the cafeteria, we plugged in maybe 6 million of the top of my head, and that's based on a basic set of assumptions of scope and cost and scale and all that kind of things. As we get into design meetings, talk about needs, talk about wants, talk about all kinds of things, it can morph, things can morph, and then once we get Gilbane, or then Gilbane will get involved and give us an estimate based on our standard or schematic design. So, so the first step that we went, that we approved to is go to schematic design, so that's really having the architect say, here's a rough draft of what it would look like, and then Gilbane coming in and saying, this is how much we think the rough draft will actually cost you.
Don Carmichael.
Part of my reason for asking the question is, as we move forward, I'm constantly thinking about our energy savings programs, working on getting solar installed. When does that come up again for discussion? Like, when we go back to the prioritization list and begin that process again? Is it when we have money in the budget, do we start talking about it? Or is it, like, we haven't done this prioritization project plan before, so we don't have a, I don't have an idea of when the next thing is. So I'm asking, when the next thing is?
Lisa Hessel.
I guess I imagine the capital projects prioritization is sort of an annual review.
That would make sense to me.
Is, is that the case?
I, I didn't have a predisposed answer in terms of what it, it could have been, it could have been anything. I hadn't really gotten that far ahead, so an annual sounds reasonable. I know some of these projects, like, take multiple years to do, so there's either a process to go through this, just to see what the priority is at that time, and there needs to be resources to go along with that.
Right.
And so I want to be able, I'll be able to give you some more information in the next coming months about resources, so.
Cara Drumke.
And if it's an annual review, I mean, I kind of see it as a live document where